Hey, everyone. We're gonna get started in a couple of minutes. So if you can take your seats, please. And if you're talking to someone, get their number and call them later. We're gonna get started in a minute or two, so please get settled. That's not me. Candidates may not have access to this person during the debate within the operating and in case of emergency, remember the production staff. Candidates may not use technology for the debate. They will include questions from myself or any questions from the audience. So if you have questions, return me. If you have questions...
I too sing America.
If you have questions for me, I will...
I am the darker sister. They send me to eat in the kitchen when company comes. But I laugh and eat well and grow strong. Tomorrow, I'll be at the table when company comes. Nobody will dare say to me, "Eat in the kitchen then." Besides, they'll see how beautiful I am and be ashamed. I too am America.
The timekeeper will display time cards in three seconds. I may interrupt any candidate if I am trying to restrain from the subject matter. These individuals may be nervous. I remind them, please answer the question that you can. Candidates must refrain from using weapons to build discretion towards their own persons. Candidates may have a position for the race in America. So, I don't care how highly society... Candidates may refer to limited notes. A notepad and pen has been provided to the candidates. The debate will last 120 minutes from open to close, including all instructions, introductions, and conclusions. The debate will be divided into subject areas as follows: racial justice, economic justice, infrastructure, crime and violence, budget. A drawing determine which candidate speak in which order. So, as the debate begins, we're gonna start from my left to right in terms of answering questions. And then, we'll begin from my far right to my far left as we continue along. Debate will begin with an opening of two minutes for each individual to introduce him or herself, why they're running, and their platform. I will address questions to all the candidates, but not all candidates will be expected to answer every question. For example, if there's a question for an incumbent, and I don't believe we have an incumbent here right now, then that question will be addressed to the incumbent, and so on and so forth. Each candidate will have 1 minute and 30 seconds to respond to a question. If a specific candidate is addressed during the response, the candidate challenger will have 60 seconds to respond. The original challenger will then have 30 seconds to rebut. I will acknowledge when a specific candidate has been addressed. After 30 seconds, a new question will be asked to a new candidate, and the time will then reset. Now, what I'm going to do is introduce all of the individuals who are here today. And then, once I conclude with all the introductions, I'm gonna begin with Mr. DeMario Boone for introduction. First, on my left, please stand up, DeMario Boone. Clara Underwood Foreman. Lawrence Mouchard. Benjamin R. Nix Jr. Anu Udevalu. Mike Vespa. Ladies and gentlemen, and those at home, let's get started. Mr. DeMario Boone with your opening remarks.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Change Peoria, for this debate. My name is DeMario Boone. My current title is the Director of School Safety for Peoria Public Schools. I was born and raised on Peoria South Side. That's where I spent the first 18 years of my life. Graduated the Manuel High School and went off to be a Peoria Police Officer and changed my profession to a Peoria Public School Safety Officer. And the reason I'm running is because of the things that I've saw in those two roles. There was actually a family that reached out to our department for help, and I went to this home and sat on her porch until 10 o'clock at night just to help this mother. She, the house was in disarray. She was having home issues. She had three or four other children, and one of her older children had been involved in youth violence and crime, and she just was reaching out for help. So I remember sitting on that porch with her until 10 o'clock at night, talking to her younger children, and then waiting for her oldest son to come. And when I spoke to him, he was very honest with me and said, "I appreciate what you're doing, but I'm gonna stay in the streets. You need to just talk to my younger siblings." This mother reached out for help. I had to try to piecemeal finding services, which is an issue in Peoria because everybody works in silos. So we had to piecemeal trying to help this parent with housing, with finances, with mentorship with the kids. Fast forward to a couple of months after that, this parent unfortunately committed suicide because of the things that she was overwhelmed with. And I don't think those are the types of things that we need to sit around a horseshoe and debate helping families like this. We don't need to sit around and debate quality of life issues for Peorians. So that's why I'm running for City Council at Large.
Hello, everyone. Again, thank you for being here. Thank you to the host for having me. My name is Clara Underwood Foreman. I have lived in Peoria for over 40 years. I am a candidate for City Council at Large. And just wanna put some emphasis on the "at large" part, which means all of Peoria. I want to fight for all of Peoria. I've been a pastor here in Peoria for over 20 years, and which have afforded me to be able to get into the community and talk to people and find out what their issues are, find out some of the things that they are struggling with, and to be able to offer some type of solution or resource for them to be able to get help. I have been in the community, working in the community, engaged in the community. And it, you know, it kinda started 20 years ago, which is one of the main parts of my campaign, and that is safety. 20 years ago, I lost my first son to gun violence. He was murdered, actually, in my home. And then, in 2015, I lost my last child to gun violence as well. So that's very near and dear to me, to be able to do whatever I can do to help families not to go through what I've gone through, and those that have, to be able to help them to heal in the process. I'm very excited about what is going on in our city, excited about you being here because evidently, you're excited as well. So thank you so much again for having me.
Thank you very much. My name is Lawrence Mouchard, and I'm very happy and honored and proud to be here. I wanna thank the organizers. This is a great, great outcome, and I wanna thank the people here. And I also wanna recognize all the people here at the table. They're all wonderful, wonderful people who are giving of themselves service to the community, and I would be happy with any and all of them on the City Council. I'm running as a proud socialist, progressive, pro-labor, LGBTQIA leftist for all Peoria in this April 4th election. Especially, I'm running for the marginalized and voiceless residents, primarily in the East Bluff, the North Valley, the South Side, Center Bluff, and all the other neighborhoods that rarely enjoy the full resources and positive attention of City Hall. If elected, I will donate at least half of my city's salary and benefits back to local nonprofit organizations. I'm not in this to make any money or to benefit financially. I was born and raised in Peoria. I'm proudly a graduate of Academy Spalding. I went to Illinois State right afterwards. Graduated with a degree in English and History. I became a reporter photographer for the, for some newspapers in the area after that, and I've been gone out of the area for about 30 years. I came back to Peoria five years ago, and I've seen that there hasn't been as much advancement as there should be. I'm really running to change that, to change mindsets, and to get people to revitalize the older neighborhoods. I live in the East Bluff, and I am proud of that. Thank you very much.
My name is Benjamin R. Nix Jr. I have moved to Peoria three years ago because I was called to be the pastor of St. Luke Missionary Baptist Church on the south side of town. I also am the Regional Northwest Region Unemployment Office Employment Services Program Manager for our area. And then, another third hat that I do hold is that I work with the Peoria Community Against Violence on the Board, and I assist with the Crisis Response Team. What got me started and interested in running for City Council is the fact that, in my short term here, in the three years, I see that there's work that needs to be done. With the Crisis Response Team, I have met with a lot of families that have been victims of violence. As a pastor of a church, through the community and my congregation that I work with, I have seen a lot of issues that need to be dealt with. Working at the unemployment office, I see a lot of individuals that come in and need assistance with jobs, that need help with resumes, need his assistance with reentry after coming out of prison. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. And the thing that got me this past year was I saw some form of the City Council not functioning in the way that it should in order to make things happen for the people of this community. And one of the things, I'm not a doctor, but some things that I have learned over my time and growing up is that a doctor will give you a shot, will give you a pill to help you with what you have as an ailment. That was my motivation. I need to get in and get involved to make the change that needs to happen. I can't sit around on the outside and expect somebody else to do it. So that's why I'm getting involved. The Bible says in 1 Corinthians 9 and 22, Paul writes, "I am all things to all men," so that I might save some. I wanna help save some of the things that are going on in this community. There are a lot of people that want change, there are a lot of people that wanna see it, and I wanna make it happen for them.
Good afternoon. Today, I would like to thank Change Peoria for organizing this event, Chama St. Louis for hosting this event at your studio, and Mr. McCall for being a moderator, and my fellow candidates. Thank you for running with me personally. I have been passionate about serving my own community since I was a teenager. It's something that has been passed on to me from my great uncle, who participated in civil rights in 1964-65 during his time in Alabama. He told us that you need, you need to serve your own community. The way is to fight for the people who can and make sure everyone is treated equally. That's something I carry on with me to this day. When I was a practicing attorney in New York, I joined, I was a pro bono attorney for New York City Civil Courts. I was a mentor for youth, tutor them in SATs and college applications. 10 years ago, I moved to Peoria. As soon as I moved here, I got involved with Priory State Legal Services. I also joined, joined Easter Seals because I love the program, what they're doing, and I care. I wanted to do something for this community because, over the years, Peoria has become my home, and this is where I belong, and I wanna give back to my community. I'm on the board of, one of my main goals at the City Hall is accelerate job training, improve quality of life, and make sure, create a sustained environment for our area businesses. Dear Peorians, I am here to serve you. I wanna be your voice at the City Hall. My name is Anu Udevalu. I wanna be your City Council at Large.
Okay, sorry, false alarm. Okay, so, yeah, my name is Mike Vespa. First of all, I would like to thank everyone else here who's seated at these tables with me. I'd like to thank Mr. Chris McCall for moderating this debate, taking time out of his Saturday. And I'd like to thank Change Peoria and Ryan, its executive director. This, this looks like a great, great turnout today, and I hope this can be informative. And I like an engaged audience. I like people to, you know, be engaged voters. So anyway, I introduce myself. My name is Mike Vespa. Like I said, I grew up in Peoria. I went to Bradley University. I went to NIU for law school. Except for those three years at NIU, I spent my entire life in Peoria. At NIU, by the way, I'm a school shooting survivor. So 15 years ago, I was, I was on the floor of my apartment with sirens and helicopters above. It was pretty terrifying. I certainly don't wish that on anybody. My sister is a news reporter. She's with NBC Nightly News and Today Show. She was up in the latest shooting. But, I mean, that's, that's terrible. But I'm getting off track here. I came back here. I have been a Democratic precinct committee man for about six years. And I've been a lawyer. I've been a public defender. I've been representing all sorts of folks in Peoria. I've been dealing with addiction, people struggling with addiction, domestic violence, and obviously, you know, felonies. I've done felony jury trials. I think there's a lot of dysfunction in City Hall. I think that dysfunction needs somebody to come in there and get things done instead of arguing over like patents, who holds a patent. I don't see that as being productive. We need productive people on the City Council. I think there's a lot of good options here, but I do submit that I'm, I will be great for Peoria. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. It's time to get started. I was asked to instruct you all when you address the audience and those watching at home to please stand up because it is a little bit difficult to see each and every individual. I will remain seated as you all are stars of the show. I am not. All right? And so, we're gonna get directly to our first question. And because Mr. Boone, he won, or he may have lost, considering he can go first. The first topic we're going to discuss is slightly out of order. It's gonna be economic justice. The question I will ask is, "How do you plan to address poverty and income inequality in our great city?"
I love that question, so I think I am lucky. I think the answer to that question will actually solve all of our issues. One of the things that I'm looking at is what Evingston is doing right now as far as some of the residents that, you know, are the poorest amongst them to be able to have a stimulus, to be able to help them into homeownership. You know, you can give a family maybe $500 a month for 24 months or whatever to help stimulate homeownership, help lift families out of poverty. Just like that mother I spoke about earlier, you know, all she was looking for was not a, you know, not a handout, but just, "Help me get up. Help me get up. Help me to raise my children." So I think that stimulus would also help. And that would help with, you know, crime because we all understand, the root, I hope we all understand, the root causes of crime is poverty. So being able to inject this stimulus, being able to make sure that, just like everybody else here, people in the horseshoe represent those that haven't had the power, those that haven't been in the light. Because a lot of people in Peoria, the ones in power, you know, they're in these silos, they're in these cliques. They're not the ones that are representing the East Bluff, the South Side. And that's why I wanted to get in the race because we wanted to make sure that we injected policies to help these type of people. So that stimulus will help. And then, making sure that we can try to do a business incubation center to help those young entrepreneurs that are trying to come and have new businesses.
Ms. Foreman, would you like me to repeat the question? Yes. Yes. How do you plan to address poverty and income inequality in our city, Peoria, Illinois?
Thank you for that question. I believe the best... I believe the best way to help our community is to begin to reinvest into the community. And as Mr. Boone said, you know, a lot of people don't want handouts. They want a way out. And so giving them an opportunity to, to, to get better jobs, to, to be able to have good housing, to be able to have some pride in, in, in our city and what they are trying to accomplish. There are a lot of organizations that we have here, giving them those resources to tap into, to find out who's helping in whatever particular area that we are in. And I believe giving them that kind of opportunity, as I said, makes them feel prideful about themselves. And then it will also, as he said, it will, it will cause us to deal with the crime that we are dealing. A lot of folks are hopeless. They are hopeless. And coming out of what we just come out of when it comes to the pandemic, man, we have a lot of people that just cannot see their way. I think it is incumbent upon us, especially our political leaders, to lift that hope, to give the people of Peoria hope. And so that's one of the things that I'm going to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize for not calling you pastor. All right. Now, Ms. Rashar, I'm going to ask you the same question. Now, this first round, since these are just introductory questions, everyone will get the same question. Next round of questions, everyone will get a different question, okay? So I'll repeat the question for you, okay? How do you plan to address poverty and income inequality in our city?
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate that. One of my main priorities is to revitalize our core neighborhoods. East Bluff, South Side, North Valley, Center Bluff, okay? Specifically, how you do this? We reinvest in those neighborhoods by getting working and decent and upgraded streetlights. We reinvest in our sidewalks. And we make sure that we get rid of the housing blight, the things that are, you know, malignant and put all kinds of negative mindsets and, and, and things into our, into our core neighborhoods that don't deserve the infrastructure degradation that the city has left them with over the years. One of the main things I want to do as, as, as part of a restorative effort is to have universal basic income. Chicago is trying this now. Cook County is trying this now. And universal basic income has been a positive and, and, and it works as success in America and all around the world. We have to do things like universal basic income, which is getting a certain amount of money to the people who are in the lowest economic levels. We have to help them on a governmental level. And it doesn't have to necessarily be tax money, but the government has to help the people who need it most. And this is something that I am committed to.
Okay, and we've heard from Director Boone, Pastor Foreman, Ms. Rashar. Now we hear from Pastor Nick Jr.
Thank you, Attorney McCall. I believe one of the things that we should focus on is that people need to be in sustaining type jobs. One of the things I would like to focus on is assisting people find the right kind of work that's going to be a livable wage, that's going to be able to assist them in taking care of their families and then building generational wealth. Second thing that I want to focus on is the education of our children. We need to be able to bring up those children in a way so that they can be productive citizens within our society. I think that if we focus on programs for them and showing them that there are things that they are capable of doing and providing a path and a light for them in the future, they are going to be in a position where they can become adults that will be productive in a society like everyone else. And then show them that there's a path forward. Because I believe a lot of the young people today don't think that there's much out there for them and they don't have the positive outlook on the future that it could be. And I want to change that for them. We start with them. We start with the adults that need the employment. And that way, we can build a nice solid base that we can start and bridge from that.
Thank you. Again, Attorney Udevulu, the question is, how do you plan to address poverty and income inequality in our city?
Thank you for the question, Ms. McCall. One of my priorities at the city hall is, how are we going to accelerate the job growth in our community? One, I'm going to implement and support the programs that will give training for the young, youth and adults in every profession, every trade. So that they are, the jobs in town are, that are filled. And we can also attract, bring more businesses into town so that they will employ our talent in town. We definitely want to retain, keep our talent in town so that we can get more revenue, we can generate more revenue. So my goal is to make sure that there is training available in, for every profession. That way, there is an opportunity available from everyone, from every neighborhood or every part of our city has a job. And we will invest in programs that will bring jobs to this town. Or we will attract businesses telling them that there are jobs available in town because we have an amazing talent here. And that is my, one of my priorities at the city hall.
Attorney Vespa, how do you plan to address poverty and income inequality in our city?
Thank you, Chris. Right now, the job market is actually pretty good. We have one of the lowest unemployment rates we've had in years. It's not to say I'm against bringing in jobs, but I think, I think we're facing more of an addiction problem right now. Something like Jolt needs better funding. Code enforcement, you know, there have been a lot of code enforcement officers that have been let go. And therefore, there's a lot of landlords not keeping up their properties. And there's out of state corporations buying up our properties, not keeping them livable. That's, that's certainly hurting people too. Support Peoria Housing Authority. I know there's new leadership there. But, you know, access to affordable housing should, should be the goal for the city council. And you can help people, you know, expunge their criminal records. I know sometimes we have those workshops. But, you know, that's often a barrier for people to get ahead. Also, the, the food desert, I think, that we have, you know, like MacArthur Highway. And John Gwynn, we were supposed to get a grocery store, but that grocery store wanted to sell alcohol. I'm not in favor of selling alcohol, but maybe gives, give that developer some, some incentive, like, like a tiff there instead of a downtown hotel for $50 million. So, thanks.
Attorney Vespa, the first question is to you again. Now, I want to remind you all, this is the point, now that we've gotten warmed up a little bit, each one of you are going to get a different question, okay? The first question for you, but we're going to stay under the same topic areas, is crime and violence. It's perfect timing as the chief is walking in. What are some effective strategies to prevent and reduce gun violence in our city? Attorney Vespa.
Thank you, Chris. That's, that's a good question. I certainly, certainly think everybody wants to reduce crime and violence. And actually, it has been coming down. I think, I hope we went from like 30 to 20 over the last year. That's good. Certainly, we need to make more progress there. I like some of the ideas that have been floated and are going to be implemented, like co responding. So if somebody like this, you know, if there is a call, somebody suicidal, you know, that happens, instead of just having police show up, maybe also have, you know, social workers show up. So, you know, they can talk to them, talk them down. I think, I think that strategy, if in place, you know, might have saved Vincent's life. I, I really, I really think so. But it is coming. I fully support that. I think there's things we can do, body cameras, great. I think even cops like body cameras because they, they like the truth to come out. You know, if they're, they're behaving well, you know, they want, they want that to be shown just as if the people that they interact with. So, anyway, those are my ideas. Thank you.
Attorney Udevulu, what are some of the root causes of crime and violence in our city and how would you address them?
Well, as a city council members, we have to collaborate with every department in our city. One of the main ones we need to collaborate is with our police department and Peoria Health Department. I'm definitely going to rely on our health department and police department to give us a guidance a little bit so that we can collaborate and implement the programs they think are the best for our community. And I'm willing to listen to them and find what are the root causes. If they suggest something, I'm there with them. I would love to sit. And I'm definitely going to rely on them for their expertise and their guidance.
Pastor Nick. How would you promote community policing and trust building between the police and the residents?
I believe we can promote that by assisting and partnering with the police department, with the proper individuals partnering with them. And when I say proper individuals, I mean people that are known in the community, that have a good standing, but also have a good working relationship with the police department. One of the things I've seen working with P.CAV, dealing with the violence in the community, a lot of young people are, are part of this. Who do they look up to? Who do they see as mentors? Who do they see as leaders? What individuals can we pull that can work and partner with the police department and with them to reach these young people, to get them to want to stop doing what they're doing, to change their motivations and to move in a different direction? I think that partnering with the police department can be a beautiful thing. The problem is, is having the right people in the right position to do the right thing. And we need to go through a proper process to make sure that the individuals we choose and select to do this type of work are going to be the people that can actually succeed and move forward with a program that we'd like to set forth.
Ms. Rashar, how would you allocate mental health crisis intervention and response resources in our city?
Thank you for the question. I think I would, how we distribute those resources is we look to the alt responder. One of the things we do is we look to the alt responder model that's supposed to be up and running right now, I believe. If we had some of those things where, when you have a situation where there's obviously a mental health situation going on, an episode, that you get those mental health professionals to the scene of a, of a, of something going on, like in the, the Mr. Richmond situation. We need a lot more mental health professionals there and a lot less police. A lot less police. And those things are, are supposed to be on the books now. Why aren't they being implemented? So I think the mindset now is let's get the right people in the right places. The police are not, not one of the priorities for me in that situation. I think we need to expand the services now. I believe it is either St. Francis or Methodist is building a new facility focused on mental health. So we need to support that issue and to get a lot, lot more situations, facilities in our area so that when people have breakdowns with opioid situations, that we have places to send them. And right now, we really don't.
Pastor Underwood Foreman, what is your stance on reallocating police department funds to social services and community programs?
Well, I believe, thank you. I believe that redirecting situations, because a lot of times the police is called on a particular incident when actually it should be EMTs or other organizations, mental health resources to handle that. I believe that, I definitely do not believe in the deep funding, but I do think taking money and moving it over to those different organizations to help them to be able to, to do whatever is needed to help. I believe the, the police department and these particular organizations working together will make a difference. There was an incident, it was several years ago when a young man was killed. And I was actually on the scene. The parent had called me to come and there was no mental health person there. So getting the right people in the right places, I believe, is going to make the difference.
Director Boone, again, we are on the topic of crime and violence. How would you address concerns of police accountability and community trust and law enforcement as a city council member?
As a former Peoria police officer and now currently a Peoria Public Schools Campus Police Officer, that's been my mission. It's, you know, it's public knowledge about what happened with me and why I left the Peoria Police Department. And it was over a racial issue because I reported that racial issue when it wasn't a popular time to snitch on the police at that time. But I reported that issue and there was a lot of internal strife where officers didn't back me up. Officers were trying to get me to, to quit the job. And I was a 21-year-old kid. And I'm actually proud of myself for taking that stance at that time. But it, it has to start systemically. Because I know when I was at the police academy, they did not train officers for culture. If, if I went into an Indian community, or I went into an Italian community, or I went into a black community, we all communicate different. And officers need to be trained to know that we all interact differently. And that accountability also has to be that people, black, brown, people of color, have to be in positions of power in those departments. Now, we put a police chief in there in position of power who looks like us, who, who sounds like us, who, you know, mirrors us. And there have been some things that's happened on the inside and him and I speak personally. He's made some decisions that aren't popular, hurt a lot of feelings. And you do that when you break things systemically. And I think when you put certain people in certain rooms and you hold people accountable, there's not going to be any of those jokes about black people or poor people or whatever, because the people in that room are going to be those people. Thank you.
Okay, candidates, we have one more round more than likely before we take a break. And so we're going to start again with Attorney Vespa. And ladies and gentlemen, the topic of discussion will be infrastructure. Attorney Vespa, how would you address our city's traffic congestion and safety issues, especially in areas near schools, downtown and major events?
Thank you, Chris. It's a good question. I like roundabouts. I think roundabouts are, you know, work well. They, they are efficient. They don't need any electricity to run the lights. You know, it's pretty cheap to, you know, convert something in a roundabout and it lasts forever. Just got to mow the grass. But, but yeah, I mean, downtown, I don't think we need six lanes in, in Adams and Jefferson. I think that was, you know, that was put in place decades, decades ago and Peoria was expected to keep growing rapidly. That didn't materialize. It's been sort of stagnating. So, I mean, people just zoom through and a lady actually got killed because somebody was driving recklessly. I think, I think if the streets are bare and, you know, I think that encourages more reckless driving. So, anyway, I, I would, I would be in favor of converting a lot of these six-way, one-way, or six-lane, one-way streets to, to, you know, two lanes, kind of like we got a water street. And more, you know, green space, make it nicer. It's, it's better for the businesses too, because people are actually seeing what they're, you know, driving past. Thank you. Thank you.
Attorney Udavu. Some community members say we have a traffic problem. What do you think? How would you mitigate those concerns or change the situation?
Okay. Definitely, we need to convert our Jefferson and Adams Street from four one-way lane to two-way lane. Because statistics have shown that the one-way lane traffic, they actually tend to drive, drivers tend to drive faster. When it's, when if it is two-way lane, they tend to drive slower. Because two-way lane is actually allows for more pedestrians to be on the streets, on sidewalks. Then it will actually encourage more businesses to open up. And people will be walking. They will be able to get into these stores. And the cars will slow down. So the two-way streets actually help boost our economy also. That will actually help opening up more small businesses. People are going in there. And it is, and they are generating revenue for us.
Pastor Nix Jr. How do you define gentrification? And what are some signs or indicators that is happening in Peoria?
I say I would define gentrification as a moving of one people to another area and then some people moving back in. We have to be careful with that in honesty because we do not want to displace anyone. We don't want anyone to feel like they are being moved on purpose. One of the things I believe that we can do is make sure that we are providing housing, affordable housing, assisting those that need assistance in getting the proper type of housing, making sure they can establish their home where they want to be and not have people feel like they have to be moved to another place. Another thing that we got to be careful of is trying to, in that thought or mind frame of attracting people to a certain area, you're attracting a certain type of person. You have to be careful of that. We are all one people. We are all one community. And it doesn't matter if you're black, brown, white, Asian. It does not matter. You're not catering to one type of person. You're catering to the city as a whole. So we need to make sure that we're providing the means for everybody, no matter what walk of life you come from, to be able to live where you want to live and be able to have the money to live the way you want to live.
Mr. Mashar. What are some of the specific tools or resources that you would provide to new entrepreneurs through a business incubation center?
Thank you, Chris. I think one of the things we have to do, of course, to try to bring in outside businesses. But the most important thing we need to do is to go to our businesses that are right here, right now, and help them. Okay? If I get on the city council, I'm going to the little restaurant in my neighborhood. I'm going to the little convenience store in my neighborhood. And I'm saying, how can we help you grow your business? Because the food deserts that were mentioned, you know, that's a huge issue here. What we need to do is to go to our people right now that are providing these services and get them to expand, to build more of these types of businesses in more of the challenged neighborhoods and to help them grow their businesses. So I don't know the ins and the outs of the incubation program per se, but I know that we have to help the people who have invested already in our neighborhoods and help them do the job that they are bound to do because they know the city, they know the people, and they know their customers. And so I think we need to go a lot more to our existing businesses, like the one right here, like Euphoria, and say, how can the city help them complete their mission? And that's what I'd do.
Pastor Underwood Foreman. How would you balance the need for rehabbing existing homes and storefronts with the demand for new development in our city?
All right. I think it would be more advantageous to rehab the existing homes that we have. Put some money into those homes. Because most of the time, when you've got new developments, people cannot afford them. And the reason being is because of the taxes, high taxes that comes along with it. We need to work with what we have. We need to go into the communities and talk to these homeowners and find out what needs to be done to help them to get their home. A lot of people have been in these homes for years and don't want to leave their home. They just want help in getting their homes fixed up. So that's one of the things I will do, is go into the community, talk to these people that are living in these homes that need help, and offer help for them.
Director Boone. What are some benefits and challenges of allowing accessory commercial units in residential areas?
A lot of benefits as far as revenue and, you know, generating revenue. But I worry about trying to do too much in specific areas. And there's actually one thing that we're talking about now, putting a retirement home or retirement village in the south end of Peoria. When we start looking at the south end of Peoria, we need to look at what really needs to be there. If you're going to put it in 61605, it better fly in 616152. If 61615 can say no, then 61605 should be able to say no and still have the same power to do it. And you talked about gentrification. That's another piece of it, too. You know, when a place like Darwin Homes can buy up homes from people and fix them up, and I've been on that website to look at how much you're going to charge for rent to make sure that that's going to be accurate. But then, some of those people that those homes are brought away from can't even buy back into the old neighborhoods that they grew up in. So you want to make sure that if you're going to use commercial and residential and play that game, make sure that we invest in the people first. And make sure that we're on top of, you know, who's buying up these homes? They did a national, a national magazine did a story on Lincoln Avenue that people were buying up houses sight unseen from Colorado, California, Texas, and they just left these houses. And it just really drives down value. But then somebody else will pick them up like Darwin Homes, fix them up real nice, and then the young people can't even move back in there. So those are the main things that I want to focus on, on city councils, making sure we invest in people. Hey, everyone. Was the first half great? All right. We're going to take a timeout now. We're going to give everyone 10 or 15 minutes so they can relax, get a drink of water. And I want to thank you all. Five-minute break? All right, all right, all right. Well, if the building owner tells me it's got to be five minutes, it's got to be five minutes, okay? Again, I want to remind you all, it is very difficult for these individuals to get up here and do this. It is tough. They have used their own resources. There have been sacrifices in their friends and their families to run for office to benefit you all. Okay? This is your last chance to get questions in. Take a bathroom break, and we'll see you in five minutes.
I am America. I too sing America. I too am America. I sing America. I am America. I too am America. I too sing America. I sing America.
Okay, what about now? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are back here from break. Alright, so we're gonna take it up a notch, okay? So take off the holding hands and walking to the bathroom stuff, okay? Alright, let's have some fun. Okay, what about now? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are back here from break. Now, the first half of the debate, it was good. At least I think it was good. Y'all think it was good? One criticism, it really wasn't much of a debate. Okay, so, we're gonna ask questions now, and we're going to address them to the group. And not only can the individuals respond, but then they can address their opponent. Okay, and then once you address your opponent, your opponent has 60 seconds to respond. And then using Samuel Jackson phrase from Pope Fiction, "May I retort?" You then have 30 seconds to retort, okay? So, me, excuse me, my English teacher would have hated that. Sincere in I will remind you of the times when we do this, okay? So let's have a debate, and so at this point, we're no longer holding hands and walking in line. It's gonna get a little bit more aggressive now, okay? Alright, and I have the questions here, and I've had multiple individuals who've stopped me and want to voice their displeasure about people not being here. I've said it, and I'll move on from it, okay? Okay, the building owner says every candidate was invited. Okay, if they're not here, it's because they declined or could not make it. The first question, and I'm gonna address this to all of you. Let's have discussion, okay? Many police reform activities, excuse me, strike that. That's a lawyer courtroom word, so that means forget you heard it. Many police reform activists have been calling for community control of police. Would you support this piece of legislation? Who wants to go first? Mr. Rashar.
That's community control of police, right?
Yes.
Alright, yeah, I'll take that question, because I am a defund the police candidate, okay? I'm proud of that. That doesn't mean abolish the police. It means take money out of their budget and put it into community groups like Jolt, like the Girls and Boys Club, like a million other groups that we have here. Okay, there's only a limited amount of money. The police have too much of it. They have not shown that they can use it wisely. Look at Mr. Richmond, okay? And a part of that, what you have to do is you have to require the police, the firemen, and all of the city employees, all the new employees, to be from Peoria. Mandatory, mandatory. Because when you have police who live next to me in the East Bluff, or live next to you in the South Side, or live next to you in the North Valley, they're gonna be thinking a lot more about how to help you than how to go to the gun, or go to violence, or anything like that. And this is the mindset that we need changed in Peoria and a lot of other places. So, that's where I'm coming from.
Let me jump in. Is there anyone whose position that is running for office that you believe is different than your position?
I'm not here to go at anyone here, so I'm just gonna say that anyone who thinks that we need to involve the police more so than what we're doing, I don't believe in that, because we're elected to make policy. The police are not there to make policy, or anything like that. They hire us, they hire elected people to, or they elect people for us to set the policies. And that's what I intend to do if I make it, is to set humane policies and go from there. I am not afraid of anything.
Alright, Pastor Nick Jr.
I appreciate your position. One of the things I want to be careful about in what he was speaking about is that defunding, what percentage are we discussing in reallocation? If the police department is not fully staffed currently, what do we gotta do to provide incentives to get the people here that we need to have here? You talk about you want to have certain individuals within the community, which is nice, which is a good thing. But what's the incentive for them? What is gonna be the driving factor to have people live in the community that gonna police the community? If we have to pay to have somebody relocated to come here? If that means bringing people from outside the city in? Where are we gonna get the money from that? If you're taking money away from the police department to put it in other places, that's gonna put them in a position where they're not able to do those type of things. So we have to be careful with the amount of reallocation. Yes, we can put money towards social services. Yes, we can do those things, and they should be done. But we have to be careful, because if you rob Peter to pay Paul, somebody's gonna fall short in the middle. So, yes, we can do those things. We have to be careful with what we're, how we're gonna do it, how we implement it. But we have to make sure that the police department is funded for staffing the way they need to be staffed, and then increase in the staffing where they need to have the social service staffing implemented within them.
Now, Mr. Rashar, I saw you shaking your head, and it looks like you want to retort.
Yes.
30 seconds.
Yes, we make those decisions, okay? Not the police, okay? They're tools, and we are there to set policies. So, I say this, I want the police defunded by 25, ideally by 25%, okay? And I think we need to start on that right now, and get the money into the groups that need it, okay? But, you know, you were saying like, some people are gonna be left behind, robbing Peter to pay Paul. We're already left behind. The city is left behind. The working people are left behind. And we have cops making $60,000 and $70,000 who are cruising through our neighborhoods who don't deserve to be there.
Director Boone, 60 seconds.
I respect both of your opinions. Very drastic. As an officer that was, that has been an officer in uniform with Peoria Police Department, and currently an officer for the school district, I understand how you feel your way, why you feel the way about police you feel. Because as a black man, I've been a black man for 41 years now. Even in uniform, when an officer is driving behind my vehicle, I still have fear. And I'm an officer, so I understand that. One of the things we have to do is make sure that the community does have more control of the police. And we need to have citizen review boards. Anytime there's an officer shooting, the citizens need to be involved in that review board also. Peoria Police, when I applied, we had over 250 officers. Right now, they have 196, maybe, ish. If you guys understood how big, how geographically big one officer has to cover things, that's already an issue. There have been times when I logged on duty as a Peoria police officer, there's eight calls holding. I drive to a house, it's a domestic, and you've waited 30 minutes to get there where somebody could have been hurt. So we gotta be very careful about just saying "defund." We need to give citizen accountability over the police.
Alright, we gotta cut you off here.
But, not just defund.
Attorney Udrabulu, what is your state?
I think we need to collaborate with every department. Before we start attacking everybody, I think we are here at the city, not just a city council, as a community. We have to collaborate with every department. We need to have an open conversation within our community. Even our police chief or police officers, we need to have a conversation with all of them, and to figure out what do we need. If they are short on staff, this is where we need to try to create, give them that, are they, did they open up jobs? Can they hire somebody in our own city? Like Mr. Demaria Boone said, if somebody, an officer, or somebody who looks like them, talks like them, they will trust them. Well, this is where we will open up the training and help them create this training so that they are hiring somebody within our own community. Because we want to make sure that the people here, the officers, are understanding because they are from our own community. So, let's give them the respect they deserve, because we all deserve it, and we have to respect every profession and every sacrifice they're making. Because as a city council member, I would never want to outweigh our public safety or something else. I always want to make sure our public safety is priority, and your interests are also priority. So let's give them the benefit of the doubt, you know?
Okay, is there anyone else who has not spoken and wants to address this issue? Attorney, okay, well, we'll go ladies first, and then we got your counsel, okay?
Thank you for that. There is a lot that I disagree with here. There is good and bad in everything. You got good cops, bad cops, you got good and bad in everything. I do not believe that the community should control the police. That's just like having another, I don't know how many of you have watched the movie Purge, of letting people just do whatever they want to do, or whatever, for one day. I think that we need to come together and sit down and see what it is that we need to do. And sometimes the wording that we use, we use "defund." "Defund," to some degree, has a negative connotation. Because defunding definitely does not mean, you know, taking everything from the police. So we need to be more specific in what we mean when we say "defund." Now, I do not believe in the community controlling the police. Just like my child is not gonna come to me and say, "Mama, I want to be in control of everything." No, there is a place and a position that my child has, of whatever, I'm gonna hear from them, but other than that, I'm the one that's in control here. And we need to let everybody do their thing and do whatever they have been paid to do.
Okay, Attorney Besper, 60 seconds.
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, I mean, as I mentioned before, I think co responding is a good idea when there's a call, somebody with an obvious mental health issue. We should have a social worker, somebody who can go there to help deal with that, talk them down. But I don't think just sending the social worker is a good idea either, if this person's armed and is dealing with mental health issues. We do need, we do need police. They are understaffed. I don't want to cut their budget. I don't want to necessarily increase their budget. I don't, I don't like, you know, military policing. But they are necessary. There are some bad dudes out there. Unfortunately, you do need, you do need cops. You need good cops, though, and often those cops have their own mental health issues that they're dealing with. So, I mean, I think, I think we need to make sure that cops can find those counselors or what have you to help process. A lot of times, they have their own home lives that are upended, that they're dealing with, and they need help, too. So, that's where I stand on that. Thank you.
Okay, next topic. And this is addressed to each and everyone, and if you want to address a specific person, you can. As a reminder, again, I'll remind you all, you all are looking for votes among the same group of people. Okay, so, check for nuances here. What will you do to help with the missing persons? In other words, the Alexis, the Alexis Scott campaign? Who wants to go first? Mr. Rashar.
Yes, thank you. I've been working on the Alexis Camry Scott campaign ever since I returned to Peoria about just shy of five years ago. I don't think the police have done near as much for, for the people who are missing, who are people who are, people of color, the people who are women. I mean, if you look at the, at what's happened in Peoria over the last few, over the last years and decades, those people have always been at the bottom of the pile as far as, you know, putting their priorities go. I would, I'm just, I just want to say that in five years, if they haven't got a good lead, why are these people still employed? Why are these investigators still around? They haven't done their job, okay? So, I don't know, whatever they're doing now, it's not good enough. And if I get in there, things are going to change.
Mr. Boone, go ahead. Director Boone.
Yeah, I worked down at Manuel High School with Alexis's mother, and see the mental strife that she went through trying to look for her daughter. And then I also worked alongside with several Peoria police officers, trying to help just generate anything to get, to figure out what happened. And we already know systemically, black and brown children who end up missing. The cities don't put resources behind them, because the people in power don't look like those children. A white child ends up missing, they will name something after them, an amber alert. You ain't going five minutes without seeing a picture or sign. So one of the things we can do as city council members is put the heat on people to keep stuff out in public view. We can spend money on hotels and stuff like that. How come we can't put Alexis Scott signs up? How come we can't talk about it every meeting that we have? Every time we go to talk to homeowners? Why don't we have signs out there? Peoria spends money on the things that they feel is important. I feel Alexis is important. Lawrence has been championing this as well. You know, they've been in the forefront of it. But as city council members, that's the reason we kind of want to be in these positions, is to be able to tout the things that we feel are important to us, to people that look like us, too. So I think one of the main things we need to do is spend money on, more on the social media campaign, put the signs out, get people out in the street to knock doors that just not all the time have to be in uniform, because some people trust people more that are not in uniform, too. But we can spend the money on that to bring this to the forefront.
Does anyone else want to address this question? Otherwise, I'll move on to the next topic.
I just want to say one thing about spending the money.
Okay, you got 30 seconds.
The, okay, we've only got $2,500, a measly little amount of money, on the Alexis Camry Scott, okay, position for, you know, for crime stoppers. It should immediately be boosted to $5,000 and $10,000, and the city show that they are serious. Right now, they are not serious on the Alexis Camry Scott campaign. I'll say it to the police chief, I'll say it to any cop in the room, and I'll say it to anyone in City Hall.
Next topic, then, unions. What is your position on unions? Will you support collective bargaining for all City of Peoria unions? Pastor Nick.
I do support unions. I believe unions do have a place in ensuring that people get what they need from businesses and employers. You can look throughout history and see why unions were created. And you can see that people needed to have certain rights, responsibilities, and certain benefits applied to them through the jobs that they had. And the employers took advantage of people, and it mattered by age, race, or sex. They took advantage of their employees. So, we should support the union in the best way possible, making sure that they get a fair, decent bargain in their bargaining agreement. We should make sure that through that process, that we listen to them, what the needs are. If there's somewhere that we've fallen short in the past, that we make sure we take care of those shortcomings and prepare them to have the right kind of employment that they need, the right kind of benefits that they need, so that they can have a sustainable life in their future through the employment that they have through the city. life in their future through the employment that they have through the city.
Anyone who wants, Mr. Attorney Vespa.
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, my grandfather was a union welder with an eighth grade education at Caterpillar. It's, it's because of that opportunity that my family succeeded, and I, I was given the advantages that I have today, able to go to college and become a lawyer. So I feel, I feel that, you know, that is something that is truly American, and everybody in Peoria, I want, I want everybody to have the same opportunity that I have because unions. So yeah, I mean, I do support collective bargaining, I think we need to, to support unions. It really helps people get a leg up. Thank you.
You know, being a lawyer, I'll say one thing. When a one person files a lawsuit versus a class action bunch of people, it's the same as with the union. Union is where leaders are speaking on behalf of the entire group. They are making sure everybody in the group is taken care of, their voice is heard. So they want to make sure that everybody has a jobs, they are getting their benefits and everything, and they're bargaining on their behalf. They are basically being their voice, just like us being at the city council. We want to be your voice, how we are trying to be your voice, they are the members' voice.
Anyone else want to address unions?
I do support unions. I think unions are a great, great part of our, of our country. I believe people get up and they go to work, they work hard for their money, and they want someone that is fighting for them to make sure that their well-being has priority. Because if we did not have unions, it would give all of the companies and corporations just the thing to just do whatever they wanted to do. So we need, the union need folks fighting for them to make sure that they get whatever it is that they need, that they worked so hard for.
Great. Now, what we're gonna do, so we can get through some of the questions, I'm going to address tables at a time. So I will consider Director Boone, of course Pastor Underwood Foreman and Mr. Mashard on one table, and then I'll consider everyone to the right of me on one table since we are evenly balanced, okay? So I'll start with, actually, we'll go to table two, okay? And we'll start with, go with, let's go with Pastor Nix Jr. What is your plan for the food desert in six one six oh five? I received about ten different questions about six one six oh five and the food desert.
Currently, there is in the works by Pastor Chuck Brown, trying to do something over there. I applaud him and his work in trying to do something. The thing is, is we have to be mindful of how we move forward. If what he is doing does not work, if it does not come to fruition, what we need to do is figure out a way that we can find someone or some business that will come in and take the place of what he is trying to do. I have not lived here very long, I've already stated that, three years. Whatever was there before, whatever grocery store was at that facility, they moved out for whatever reason, whatever purpose. We need to look at another, if it's a regular grocery chain, or look at Hy-Vee, Kroger, whoever, and say, can you put some smaller type facility there? How can we help you get that started, get it implemented, and get it going? How, what do you need? Do you need extra security? What, what was, what was the purpose? Did you have a lot of robberies? Did you have stealing? What was the thing that was going on that caused the other person to move out? We need to find a way to curtail that and fix that for the next person that's going to inhabit that facility, to make sure that they stay, that they can earn money, because that's what they're there for, and then still be able to provide the services that we need in that area.
Attorney Uda Baloo, food deserts.
I'm a big fan of community gardens. I think this is where, as a community neighborhoods, this will help them also mingle together. This is a moment where families are coming together, especially the kids, introducing them to gardening. Maybe let these kids, you know, start digging and growing their own plants, you know, like tomatoes or something. They actually understand the value of the food. They will learn that once they grow, they want to eat it. And we are actually getting the neighborhoods together, neighbors collaborating with each other and growing these gardens together. And, you know, this is what happened in Detroit. Detroit used to have a food desert, then somebody, a little girl, a teenager, she started community gardens, and it got expanded in the neighborhood. I think that is one of the best ways we can start, and this is where neighbors and everybody is collaborating. And as a city council member, we will encourage them. And this is where we can attract more food when there are farmers, everybody, they can come, collaborate with you, give you some guidance, you know? So you are growing your own food, and it is best experience. You should try it.
Attorney Vespa, food desert, six one six oh five.
Thank you, Chris. Actually, there is a nonprofit market, Peoria Grown, I have, I have their pamphlet with me that's, that's open on the south side in six one six oh five. But, you know, it, which is fantastic, I think, I think we should support them. But also, like I said earlier, I think getting a full-fledged grocery store would be good, too, and I would support some sort of incentive for a developer to come, you know, at the MacArthur Highway and John Quinn intersection, that development fell through. I think we should be more open to developer, you know, sweetening the pot for developers on the south side, kind of like we do up north or downtown, or for Portillo's, for example. So, thank you.
Let's shift the topic to water. And when I address you, if you want to use some of your remaining time to address something you've heard, feel free to do that. You have ninety seconds. So the question is, and a reminder, I know some of you want to address some of the things you've heard, but remember, we're trying to get through some of the questions. But if you want to use some of your remaining time to address something you heard, if you disagree, please use your time to do so. Because again, we're trying to show everyone who's watching here in person and on the screen, the differences between you all. What due diligence should be used to determine whether or not the city should buy the water system? Mr. Mashard.
Thank you. The due diligence is, I, there's some kind of economic council that has studied this for years, decades, and they have a plan. So we need to look at that plan. Number one, I am for municipalizing the water system, and I'd go a lot, I would go to the power system and our other basic things as well, because the people who run these things are, their, their best interests are not for the people. The Illinois American Water, I've heard, takes out twenty million dollars a year from Peoria. Do you think we could use a little bit of that money here? Okay? I am for public ownership of basic utilities, like the water, like the electricity. No Ameren shut offs, no Ameren shut offs, no Ameren shut offs. Ameren is a horrible corporation that we should look to get another corporation, because those people have nothing to do with humanity and decency, and they're trying to, they're trying to, you know, hide behind the fact that they're getting these different arts organizations and stuff, and they're sponsoring them. To heck with that. We need to see clear through, places like Ameren and Illinois American Water are not our friends. We need to take it back from them. We can control this, the people who are already working, we want to have them working for the city, not for those groups.
All right, yes, we're gonna cut you off. Pastor Underwood Foreman. What due diligence should be done to determine how the city goes about buying a water system?
Well, I think that, first of all, a feasibility study would be good to, to find out just, you know, how it would benefit us. I agree, I do believe that the city should buy the one, the water company, because number one, it gives, it gives control, it gives the city control. And the other thing, it, it will bring in revenue, and then we can hold the water, the city accountable for transparency. I think there's a, that's a lot of the problem that we are dealing with here with different projects, is that the city, the people are not included into decisions that's being made. And so I want to switch over, I want to switch over with some of my time to go back, if I can, about that food desert that is about to drive me nuts, because I cannot understand why there is no food, no grocery store in the, on the south end and the east end. If this was a situation over in the fourth district or fifth district, that would not be happening. We have somebody that is willing to put their money, that is working hard, Chuck Brown, we need to assist him and help him to bring grocery stores into the south end and also the east end.
Director Boone.
Absolutely, we should buy the water company. I'm kind of tired of sending money to, I think it's New Jersey that owns it, I'm tired of sending money to Jersey. And then we also, but before we buy that water company, we need to look at the infrastructure and see how much we're going to have to improve it. Best part about it is, we use our people to improve that infrastructure. We use people that are from Peoria, we pay them, and we make sure that the people that are improving that infrastructure are diverse. We make sure that black and brown people are represented in fixing that infrastructure. Also, I was writing down, I want to call him Pastor Lawrence when he was speaking. But, you know, the, the city council has to be strategic on making sure that we just, I don't want to make it dumb it down or anything like that, but we just have to be strategic when we talk about that, that food desert. So I think we all kind of agree with the water company, we want to purchase it. We all are not happy with Ameren, and we think that we need to, to control our electricity that way, you know, people in, in low impoverished areas, we're not just shutting them off, we could actually work with those families, just like Evingston, that stimulus could actually help that piece, so you're not just cutting those people off, you're actually injecting services in those homes and helping them to get a leg up. But also, when we talk about, I'm shooting, I'm getting scatterbrained here, I'm sorry, there's just so much, and the time is throwing me off. But, uh, yeah, I do believe we need to buy that water company. I do believe that Peoria needs to control its own resources.
That's your time.
Thank you.
Good. Now, for the second table, that's really the second and third table. We started first line with Pastor Nix, we're gonna start with Attorney Vespa. What is an important lesson that you've learned in the last year that has shaped your vision for Peoria?
Well, last year, I mean, certainly something very recent was, I think, the hotel developer getting sixty million dollars, I think, to, you know, to build another hotel downtown. I'm not sure if we have the occupancy for that. I was, I was surprised how quickly that, that was pushed through. I was surprised by the dysfunction of the city council when they were debating whether to, you know, I think pay twenty-five thousand dollars for an eight million dollar grant in order to find anti-violence initiatives, try, try to solve our violence problem. It became a lot of infighting, it became a lot of dysfunction, and that was, that was disappointing to me. So, I mean, I, I want to get in there, I want, I want to fix that, I want to be more deliberative, I want to look for solutions and try to find the solutions with, you know, hopefully a few of these other fine folks that are, that are sitting here with me today. Thank you.
Attorney Uda Baloo.
I think we need to have a more transparency between the city hall and people in town. This is where we need to create more communication, where city council members are often in the community, maybe every month, holding a town hall sessions and informing all of you what is really happening at the city hall. Like, having a dialogue with you and explaining what is actually happening there. And this is the, one of the reasons that I decided to run, because I want to be out there, I want to bring these issues back to the community, and I will be the person, be there every month, holding a town hall or meeting you at a different locations, so that I'm meeting every neighborhood, and I'm presenting, telling, informing you what is happening at the city hall and why you should also participate and provide your opinion. Because we are there to be your voice, and that's what we want to take it back to the city hall, and until everyone participates, they won't know what is happening there. We need at least ninety-nine percent of your voice needs to be heard there. So maybe when I release a survey, when I say this is something, and I would love for all of you to go there, participate, or express your opinion, send me a feedback saying that we want this decision, we want the city hall is addressing this issue, this is how we feel. And I want to be your voice there.
You ready? We're ready. All right. What I want to say is that last year, I had the opportunity to address the horseshoe personally. As Attorney Vespa mentioned about the cure of violence issue, I addressed the city council to their face, and I expressed this, that they either had some indifference or ignorance going on, and I felt that they were operating in a dysfunctional manner. The thing I want to bring to the table, too, city council, is this: communication, collaboration. I believe that with the right individuals, and I believe all of us up here have this mindset, that we want to be able to talk, to have communication, to get the issues addressed, to make sure things are being taken care of. I think that we have to stand for all of you. We're representing you, so we have to be able to be reasonable, approachable, and be able to have the discussions that need to be made. If I come off combative, nobody's going to want to talk to me. No, I want to come to city council, I want somebody to be able to look at me and say, there's Nix, I can go talk to him about this issue. Even if we're on different sides of the aisle, we can still have a conversation, because we have to find somewhere where we can meet and come together to make things happen for the city of Peoria.
Director Boone, we're gonna transition to working together. How do you plan to engage other city council members to support your goals and plans?
And I think that goes right along with, you know, being engageable, being, you know, personable. But one thing I, I say when I get these, you know, questionnaires and I'm speaking to the other PACs, if it's not benefiting all people, because we're running for city council at large, if it's not benefiting all people, if it's just benefiting six one six one five and not six one six oh five, or, you know, six one six one five most and not oh five, I'm not going to be silent about it. It's just certain things that you have to take a stand for. Just like I explained earlier with what happened to me with the Peoria Police Department, I could have kept my mouth shut, but there are some times that you need to step up and say something. There are some times you need to be, you can disagree and be cordial, but then there's times where you have to step up and step out and by any means necessary, get your point across. So I think with city, other city council members, if I get on that council, I want them to be on notice that, yes, I, I respect you, I will be respectful, but if it's not for this whole, if it's not for this whole city, we gonna have a problem.
Pastor Underwood Foreman. The question was, how do you plan to engage other city council members to support your goals and plans?
One thing I can say that I'm not going in, in city hall to reinvent the wheel. I'm going in to work with the mayor and the other council persons. Anybody knows me, knows that I have my own voice. I've talked to some city council persons, they've talked to me, kind of seeing where I'm going to be and if I'm gonna vote with them. If, if I feel that it's the right thing for the people, I will, and if I don't, I won't. I am the person that, that will go in there and, and, and let the people know that it is time for change, and that change is making the people first priority, and that's it.
Mr. Mashard.
Yes, thank you for that question. I think I've proved, since the time I've been back in Peoria, I've proved I can work with anyone. I've proved that I worked with the city council to address the mass evictions by Darwin. Because of the things that I did and my allies did, regular people, we stood up and we engaged our council members, and we got some life-saving time for people to adjust their lives to these rapacious and horrible corporations destroying our neighborhoods. I have proven that I've I have proven that I've already been able to deal with city council members, um, on a variety of issues for several years. Okay? I'm confrontational when it needs to be. Because no one is standing up. And I'm sorry, I am not a go-along, get-along guy. I am here to make change. People's feelings are going to be hurt. And you know what? If it's some of the people who this should have happened to them a long time ago, so be it. You know, I just look at things from a human point of view. Where is the humanity? Where are the people standing up for people like Alexis Camry Scott, who has no one in her corner? She's abandoned. I will not let that happen.
Okay, we're a few minutes in wrapping up, so we're going to try to move a little quicker. Okay? Uh, we started last time with Attorney Vespa, so we'll go back to Pastor Nix Jr. We are only as strong as our weakest link. What would you say is the weakest link in Peoria and what are your plans to address it?
Wow.
Speaking of correct.
Let me focus on this. Uh, when I first moved to Peoria three years ago, my very first job was a teacher at Peoria High School. Uh, as a first-year teacher, my degrees are business, uh, bachelors in business administration and masters in public administration, which is perfectly geared toward city council. Uh, I had a special certificate to teach and teach business class. I was only able to teach for one year because another teacher decided that what I had established was nice and they came in and took my class and I was out of a job. Uh, I believe education is one of the weakest links that we have in this city and that needs to be fixed. Uh, I did not appreciate or like some of the policies that were put in place with the children, how we're moving them along, how we're not holding them accountable. And some people might not like when I say this, but we need to start working with the parents and hold them accountable too. To make sure that they are working with their children so that we can build up the next generation. We can't just pass along people that are not ready to take over. We need to prepare them and build them up and prepare them for the future that they are going to be in control of.
Attorney Wood, Peoria's Pickerson.
I definitely agree with the pastor, Menjirman. Um, we do need to focus on our children's education. Education is a priority. It's necessity, important for everybody. And we do need to incorporate more programs. This is where maybe we will, city council need to collaborate with the school districts to see whatever programs that need to be implemented are there. Next, I think Peoria, we need to integrate and collaborate with each other. We shouldn't be divided because united, we can make things happen. And at the city hall, this is where I plan to be collaborative, I want to work with everybody. We're adults, yes, we are bound to have different opinions, different, uh, fine. But at the end of the day, we are there to serve you. And this is where we have to put aside whatever personal opinions or agendas that we have. And we have to work together to make sure we are serving Peoria, what is best for Peoria.
Attorney Vespa.
Thank you, Chris. Um, I think one of the weakest links right now is the dysfunction that I've been talking about earlier, it's preventing us from moving forward. Also, the disparate treatment, uh, between north of Route 150, War Memorial, and south. I think, I think there needs to be, uh, the same or more equitable investment, uh, north as, or south as there is north. Um, social services, I, I think can be beefed up substantially. A lot of the social workers I know are very underpaid. Um, so I mean, I, those are the three that I, so long, thank you.
Okay. In consideration of time, I'm going to ask one more question and it's going to be kind of a fun question, so everyone can relax a little bit. Um, the question is, what animal symbolizes you as a city council person? And how will you support the arts? I'm going to ask that question of everyone. 60 seconds, Director Boone.
It was red, I didn't know if it was on. What animal would represent me?
As a city council person.
As a city council person. Um, it's definitely not going to be a dove, because I'm.
Don't say scar from Lion King.
It's not going to be a dove, because I'm, I'm going to be very, very blunt and honest. Uh, I would say a lion. I think, uh, that's what we need in city council. We need somebody that's going to come in, um, and demand that, uh, the public is heard. So I think a lion would be, uh, what I would, uh, embody with city council. And how would I support the arts?
Correct.
Uh, I think the arts is extremely important, um, working for Peoria Public Schools. I see how, what happens, um, when students pick up the arts and, and what they can do, um, in the future with that. So, again, it's just like if Peoria can, you know, buy hotels and put money in certain areas, you know, we can get involved with helping with the arts. And I know at one point, city council, uh, had meetings with school board. And I think that needs to go, so.
Pastor Underwood, four minutes.
Well.
What, what's your animal and how would you support the arts?
My animal is an eagle, because I believe in soaring high. I believe in going high, looking back down at the situation, evaluating the situation and scooping in and taking control of the situation. When it comes to the arts, uh, I believe that is an, uh, and, uh, it's an amazing thing when we have the arts, especially in our schools. It helps the, the children to identify who they are and some of the things that they want to do, uh, in their lives. So I agree with it, I wholeheartedly, I'm glad that we had it when I was in school, uh, not like we have it now, but to be able to, to reach down and fi, and figure out what I want to do and the school and the arts helped me to do that, I think that is amazing.
Ms. Pashor. How would you support the arts and what animal defines you as a prospective city council person?
Well, art saves lives. Art saves lives, absolutely. And everyone here knows it. I would defer to people much smarter than me about this. I would, uh, maybe convene, uh, the, uh, the, the school, uh, teachers involved with that on a secondary and grade school level. Also, taking advantage of the art professionals from the local universities, convene a, a commission and go about it, how to, uh, how to, to implement and support the arts much more in our lives than we already are. We need to support them in our education, absolutely. Uh, as far as an animal, I'm going to say I would like to be a cat, because a cat is smart. A cat is loyal to its family, my family here and in Peoria, all through Peoria. And if you throw us out a window, we'll land on our feet.
Pastor Nix.
Wow. Supporting of the arts is very important. Uh, studies have shown that children that are, uh, given, uh, delved into the arts at early age, uh, that get implemented into these types of programs, they develop better. Uh, and, and that studies do show that. So we do want to, uh, try to show them the arts at an early age and get them started so that they can grow into that. Uh, as far as an animal, you guys are taking all these animals. Uh, but I would like to be a hawk. And the reason why I say that is because hawks have vision and they are strategic in planning and what they do and how they strike and implement what they do. I want to be strategic in how I implement the plans that I'm going to do for you, the citizens of Peoria, while I'm at city council.
I would say I would like to be Lab Doodle, because if I don't say that, my dog would get upset with me. Yeah. Um, just like her, I am friendly, approachable, and I'm open, I like people. I want to listen to people and I care about people, especially I care about this community. When it comes to art, I'm a big fan of art. And I think we have to enhance more art culture in this community. The quote is, vibrant art culture leads to creativity, creativity leads to innovation, and innovation leads to opportunities.
Attorney Vespa. The arts and what animal defines you as a prospective city council person?
All right. Yeah, I think all the good animals are about taken now. Um, uh, I, I mean, I, I guess, uh, dogs, cats, uh, I, you know, beaver maybe? I mean, like, you know, I like building things, I think they're friendly generally, as long as you don't knock down their, whatever they're building in the river, you know, their, their dams. Um, so, but yeah, I mean, I, I do want to get to work, I want to work with people on the city council. Um, so yeah, I, I think, I, I love the arts, I think we have a great art community, you know, First Fridays and such, we have a vibrant art community. I think, you know, being an inclusive and welcoming city, I think is, is a good way to attract artists, um, and, and increase, uh, our community. You know, maybe holding festivals, you know, maybe, maybe a film festival, I don't know. I, there's, there's a lot of different ideas, you know, you can do to, to attract people. There's plenty of towns smaller than us that have come up with something like that. Um, so, so I mean, yeah, those, those are the things I come up with.
Now, Attorney Vespa, we're going to allow you to get a drink of water and then you'll go into your 60-second closing. So if you need to take a sip, go ahead.
Okay. Is this still on? Okay, well, yeah, I mean, this, this has been fun. I, I, I've enjoyed the crowd, it's, it's been lively, but, you know, respectful, cordial. Uh, I think there, there have been a lot of ideas, you know, I've learned some things tonight and I hope, I hope everybody watching at home, including everybody here, has learned some things. Um, good ideas moving forward. Um, you know, there, there's going to be other forums too, we're looking forward to those. I hope the attendance of these future forums are going to be as, as good as we, as we have here. I, I certainly have my platform, I, I have my ideas, I've introduced myself. Um, feel free to reach out though to me, um, and if you have questions, um, you know, I'll try to be open and approachable, uh, even after the election, if, if I were to win, I'd be on the council, I, you know, I'd give my office number and then give my email. But, um, yeah, and I, I've, I've enjoyed, uh, today and I want to thank, you know, Chris for moderating this and, uh, Change Peoria and Ryan, um, for helping put this on, very professional and, and a good time. Thank you.
First of all, thank you, Change Peoria, thank you, Shama St. Louis for organizing this, and I would like to thank all my candidates for being here, fellow candidates. Um, at the city council, my priorities are, one, how, I want to enhance the quality of life in Peoria. This is where I want to help make that, our city safe, enhance the programs, vibrant art culture, entertainment, everything to our city. Next, I want to accelerate the job growth in the city. This is where I want to introduce the programs for training. Third, what is the mentorships, create mentorships for our youth, adults, women, everybody, and also business owners. I'm a big supporter of our small businesses because they are the heart of our economy. I want to create a sustainable environment for them so they are here for a longer term. Finally, I want to be your voice, because it's time that somebody represent you. So vote for Anu, who is voice of Peoria.
Once again, thank you to Attorney McCall, to Ms. St. Louis for the facility, Mr. Williams for our timekeeper, and Change Peoria. I want to say this, I came here for a purpose. Uh, I'm here to be the person that is going to symbolize and represent all of Peoria. Uh, I want us to be able to find ways and paths to move forward, uh, making the conversations happen, uh, making the city council work together to make sure that we're providing and doing the job that we need to do for every citizen of Peoria, not just for the north, but for the south, east, west, everybody included. Because we all have to work together to make this thing happen. And I'm going to start the conversations and make sure that the meetings are happening, that the people are listening and that the people are going to do what they say they're going to do to make sure we're getting the job done for us all.
Thank you very much for everyone being here, especially the people who took time out of their day to be here. It's very important and I thank you very much. And the people, uh, looking at the live stream and the people who will see this afterwards, thank you very much for being engaged, because that's what all this is about, is civic responsibility, civic engagement, it's about being an American and that's about participating. I want to say, I'm going to defend LGBTQIA rights to my dying days. I'm going to defend abortion rights to my dying days. And you said one thing about the weakest link. The weakest link in this city is the inability, is, the city hall has not done anything to protect the weakest people here. That means we have to house the unsheltered people and we have to help in harm reduction. Those are very critical and that's what we need to do.
Pastor Underwood, four minutes.
All right, time to get down to business, because we can, you know, we can be up here and we can talk and say what we going to do, but it's time out for talking about it and start being about it. Now, I want, I got my paper here, because I need to read, because I want to be able to say everything, uh, that, that I need to say here. When I am elected, I will push for policies that's going to ensure the well-being of the people of Peoria, not just for the south end, but all people. That's what at large mean, all of Peoria. I'm going to champion for new businesses, new restaurants, safety, food desert, fixing our messed up roads, lighting and housing. I am going to be your voice to speak for you.
Director Boone.
Uh, thank you everyone and thank you, Change Peoria, for having this. Um, really my, my biggest goal, uh, running for city council is, you know, it's kind of described in a picture, I don't know if you guys have seen it, where these three little kids are looking at a baseball game and you see the fence is really tall, the smaller kid is down here, just looking at the fence, the middle kid is just looking at the fence and taller kid can see over. And then they talk about equity, right? So what they do is they put two crates beneath the smaller kid and one crate in the middle kid and the tall kid doesn't need a crate. And everybody says, oh, that's the end of it, it's, it's equitable now, it's fine. My job is to say, remove the damn fence. Why do we have to play in politics to put a crate here and put a crate there and put a crate here? That should not be conversations we have around a horseshoe in a debate to say, do we need to buy a hotel or we need to determine how do we cure violence? Like, we can walk and chew gum at the same time. The young lady I talked about committed suicide because we had those conversations. And as city council members, we need to ensure that that doesn't happen again. Thank you.
All right. Oh, oh yeah, that gives me no energy. Okay. Thank you all for coming, thank you, Chris McCall, for being the moderator today, give him a hand, he did a phenomenal job. I want to say thank you to Ryan for being a fierce leader of Change Peoria. We met several years ago and he was like, hey, I want you to join this thing called Change Peoria. And I was like, who are you? And we've been inseparable ever since, so, thank you, Ryan, thank you Ezra. If it sounds good in here today with the mics and the sound, that was all Ezra. So he also, uh, took lots of photos, so they will go up on Change Peoria's page and you all can look for photos of your favorite candidates. Uh, please remember that early voting starts February 23rd. Yes, so, please, if you like what you heard today, go give these candidates your votes. Don't forget that this is a cumulative voting cycle, so that means each person gets five. So if you want to give one candidate all five of your votes, you will only select their name. If you want to split your vote and give multiple candidates your vote, you will select each one of their names until you get to those five votes. Okay? Um, am I missing anything? Thank you to Chanel, who's also on the board, thank you sincere, for volunteering and keeping time, we were on it. Um, and to David back there, the live stream looks amazing, I kept checking it throughout the event, so make sure you go share it, tell your friends about it, and let's really get people, um, open and engaged in our electoral cycles here in Peoria. Um, this is Euphoria Area Arts and Dance Studio. So of course, I'm happy that all of you support the arts. If you want to know more about this space, you can go to euphoriapeoria.com and Ryan is going to close us out.
I also Shama, the place looks great. I really appreciate you letting us use it. It's an awesome place. I'm glad you found it. I would also thank everyone for coming as well and definitely for the candidates who went for running for office and for coming today. I really appreciate that. It was a good conversation. My friend Avon mentioned earlier, if you look back at the history of Peoria and what the makeup of the council looked like and what it looks like now and what it's going to look like after this election, wow, what a big change right there. It's already steps towards the future. So I want to thank you all for running and know it's a tough job and thank you so much. Thanks, everyone, for coming.
There were lots of questions that didn't get asked. If you, I passed a family then, if you want a copy of them.